Auto sale is closed.
Retail.
Excuse me?
Auto sale?
People who've never been in business for the sale don't realize how hard this is going to be to crank back up.
I know it.
No, no. Thank you. I watch a hole of water dry up in here in Canada. Almost un-American.
It's like the Indian king. Trust people's desires and care of each other.
Was Army looking at the shelter in place? Did I hear anything about Army? Do you have a shelter pledge anymore?
They're waiting on the can.
Of course, when the, when the county makes an order like that, that shuts the city down too, but they're in the county.
That's right.
So why does the city even have to worry about it when we can do it?
Well, that's when we should have got together and talked about it more than.
Should have been first. But that would have been very nice to talk about.
Yeah.
Find out what's going on.
There's some things that won't be seen in the fight.
Sometimes cities forget during the campaign though. Oh, thank you.
This one's not.
You haven't given that before?
Okay, good morning. No County Court will now come to our order, setting in an emergency meeting. Tuesday, March thirty first, two thousand and twenty, it's eleven thirty-three AM. Make note that, uh, um, this meeting was posted in the manner for a time required for an emergency meeting. That all members of the court are present. We'll go over opening ceremonies.
Uh, by me, I think if this was a time we need to pray, this is probably one of the most important times we need to pray.
Mr. Bondi, would you please believe this in prayer?
Father, we're here before today just thanking the Father for your many blessings, Father, and for this time. And Father, we ask for your guidance and your direction and all that we say and we do in this meeting, Father. And Father, we ask that you be with the people out there in the world today, Father. We ask you that you be with them. That fear don't take them over, Father. That they have an assurance, Father, that you are still in charge of what's going on in here. And Father, we ask that you be with those that are sick. Be with all of these officials, Father, both local, state, and federal, for making the decisions. And Father, we ask, Father, for your guidance and direction. Let's go to the precious name. Amen.
Amen.
The primary purpose for this, uh, meeting was called, uh, reason that I thought it was because of the, uh, tornado that we experienced on March the eighteenth. I believe on the twenty-fourth, I think that I issued a, a declaration of disaster on that particular event. This being the seventh day that if that continues, the court needs to, uh, either certify that or, uh, approve or let it continue. So I don't think there'll be any federal financing along with that. But to be eligible for any state financing or, or Small Business Administration or any other, uh, possible, uh, statement, just if individuals might have or that county collectively. Because the government entity might be eligible for it, it would require this declaration.
I think we need to, you know, of course. I think we need to recoup our overtime, that we did and stuff like that, so I think it would be a good idea.
Is it necessary to extend it or just have it open for, for the week during the duration of that time? Is that?
Well.
As long as we had one.
You know, well, I think the court would have to, uh, I think the court would have to act on that affirmatively or it would continue if we just, I don't know if it would, I think it was called a fire action of the court. Now, it can continue on after that.
How long would it have to continue?
It would, it would continue until, uh, such circumstances as I would recall it or cancel it, uh, it could.
Can it be canceled at the, at the court? If it's canceled, can you cancel it or the court would have to call?
No, the court would not be, uh.
So it's your party for us to continue it, but you can cancel it whenever you.
It would be kind of like the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, in circumstances that were relieved or.
So it will not be up to this court to end that declaration, it'll be up to you as emergency manager.
Just if the court consenting to it or?
I think we need to.
Let it down, down.
I think we need to. Make that motion.
But down motion.
I'll say, I'll say.
Second by Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Okay, uh, only to consent to the, uh, declaration of disaster pursuant to the tornado, extensive wind damage and rain, uh, that occurred on March the eighteenth. And so for Young County, Texas, all in favor?
Aye. Judge might also ask that should these disaster declarations be made, that the commissioner be informed of at the time of their death?
I hope that's being informed by everybody involved in, I don't know, I, I wouldn't expect it to anybody any longer, longer than that, it just depends on what's, um, what might be advised to those persons who, uh, to experience that most severe damage. And possibly the county, if the county becomes eligible for some kind of funding to, to reduce some of its costs.
This declaration still does not give us permission to enter private property with county resources to do work for individual?
I don't, I wouldn't enter it without consent of owner.
Well, the owner, he had to see it, so I just wonder about the rest of the taxpayers, know whether they're taking county resources.
It won't, will not, um, it would give you authority to enter there, especially on, uh, property owners, uh, require us to.
Other than rescue and recovery, would give us to, to clean up their properties?
I think in, uh, the circumstances, yes, we have that ability.
Because we were asked to supply trash receptacles, use dozer, to clean up, move trailer houses and that kind of thing early on. Of course, we cleaned up the roadways where the county's responsibility was, but, you know, much of that's going to be, those that are insured, that's some insurance responsibility there. So you're saying it's okay for us to get on the property and clean them up?
I believe so. Okay, I've got five of them there.
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, I guess I'm, I'm BMC, I'm not president, I'm hoping, I would have him here where he can give us a little report on COVID nineteen. To my latest knowledge, uh, there's been a hundred and fifty-seven tests that have been submitted to our, to the lab, lab or labs that we're using. A hundred and nineteen of those have come back negative. We have had four positive tests, uh, as of my latest knowledge anyway. And there's thirty-four that are negative. I haven't heard this morning yet, uh, local health authority about those numbers are in season. That's really about, I don't know about that. I was at the city council meeting yesterday afternoon, five o'clock, where, uh, the council, voted to approve an ordinance pursuant to a, uh, declaration of shelter in place that the mayor would put together and, uh, present. I think it was kind of mirrors Wichita counties or which, or which taught all the seats probably. Mirrors their, um, declaration. I've been encouraged to, to do that, um, not only over phone call, conference phone call yesterday between, uh, the mayor, the Graham, the, uh, city manager, myself, Matt Martin, our local health authority, and a group of doctors that were putting the fine chain mail. There might be another one or two only called, were called. Their, uh, the doctors pressed hard, our local health authority especially pressed hard to put in, they wanted to make the, uh, shelter in place order. Obviously, City Graham, um, took that part. It was a strong argument. Not the only time I've heard it, I've heard it from the very start, if that's true, what we need to do. I don't want to do the one, but, uh, because of their beast, their has, and their pressure, uh, and I have spoken also with the, uh, city, with mayor, City Bondi. They're pretty well in line thinking that that's the thing that we should do, that I should do. So I have drafted a, uh, a declaration there, an amended declaration to the, uh, disaster that I've, that I first presented on the seventeenth of March. This is amended declaration, uh, and it's, uh, got a listing of essential businesses and services included in it. It's got a modified clause in it and sort of recommendations of all of the, uh, all the recommendations that were in it are now ordered. They're mandated, so, um, if you review that, if anybody might, might get comments on that.
You know, I understand the order, I understand the disaster we did. I understand the orders that Wichita has done and our surrounding counties have done. It doesn't, it's kind of like us issuing a burn ban. Unless the people adhere to what the order says, then it's not going to do any good. If we don't follow the rules that's set before us, then these orders are not worth the paper they're written on. And we're not trying to scare the people, we're not trying to cause them to go and, and, and be going to the grocery stores and lawmarts and, and rush it and say, this is, we can't go back there, you know what? That's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to say, you know, guys, if you'll just use common sense, stay at home. Just do what you have to do. Do the working back, get your groceries, come back home. That's all we're going to do. It's not, but here we are, we're the kind of people that says, if you can't do something, hide and watch, I'm going to do it. But I don't think they realize what we're dealing with. And I'd hate to be a person that went to another neighboring county to give that county something because I broke the law across the line. But that's not what this, that, this, this deal right here is simple to do if we adhere to it. It's like a burn ban. Only a burn ban works if people go through there and say, you know, I'm not going to start that brush pile, I'm not going to burn that pasture. But this is the same thing. But I do feel like, though, if we don't adhere to what the local people do, if we think this is stringent, I believe the governor will do something even more stringent. If not the president of the United States. If we don't try to do it within our own, he's given us the opportunity to do it, voting. And if we don't adhere to it, I'm sure what we're going to be.
Well, the mandates in this order are enforceable, um, you know, obviously, it's definitely relatively difficult to police a lot and it does. Common sense, um, is not difficult to comply to, however, it does cause hardship on the public. I think generally that we've had relatively good, uh, voluntary compliance, but it's just not to the level that what it's going to have to be to, flatten this curve, get on the downside of coronavirus. You know, I've got the intention blocking list, I might make a few amendments to it. I think there are a few businesses in there that I probably have left out. Some retail, clothing businesses, doing things like that. It pretty well allows most business operations to operate. Some of them specifically states the distancing requirement and the, uh, limited group, ten or less, uh, maximum. Obviously, you'd like to see greater than that. There's a few businesses that will not be, uh, included in the essential services or businesses list. So, you know, you feel for those people, some of those are the only income they have. It's difficult. You know, it's difficult to say, here's what you have to do in that state, your place of residence. And only travel or only leave your residence for emergencies or absolute necessities. You know, if we think that it's easy until we do that. I mean, we're a local society and that's probably part of the problem is the mobility that we have, which didn't have thirty years, forty years, fifty years total. And that's causing problems too.
Can I just look at this as an unleash travel permits and stuff? How does, how does this work? How do these travel permits and stuff work? Like his workers, my workers.
And essential business, which the government's going to be an essential business. On essential business or, or service, it would be a letter of head from the company to the employees to take with them so they could have the ability to travel home to work or from work location to work location. Uh, that's, I've had a lot of questions about permanence, the permanence, you know, if we, um, shelter in place, the permanence for travel or to go back forth work. Well, it's not something that, I've asked my colleagues and we've talked about that at length and nobody, no government has done that, they don't issue those and it's something, uh, nobody, we've just kind of collectively think that it comes down to the employer, the employer giving their employee, um, that letter of transportation where they could present it in case some law enforcement or something like that stop them to verify that they were working. They were driving to and from work or from work site to work site. And I think that's what that, that's the best that we can find, it just not, there's not any information out there about that.
It's totally important for.
A lot of companies are already doing that and they're bringing big copies of it and we'll put them in folders so we know who they are.
So it's up to the employer, company to decide whether or not they're an essential service? And then provide their employees with original.
If it's listed as an essential service, they could certainly make a plea to
To you?
To me or to the city or, or whoever they're applying.
Well, if you declare.
Or in applying they are an essential service.
You make this declaration countywide and that takes care of the folks in the city also, right?
Well.
Are they not state county residents?
If my, if, if this order is stricter than their order, yeah, it takes precedence. But if it's, if, if it's not stricter, then mayors work pretty well and, you know, they'll follow there and they can find.
Well, if the city should suspend theirs for any reason before the counties, well, the residents of the cities in them, counties still be under the county's declaration?
Yeah.
Am I, uh, assuming that, uh, Dallas County gets sued because they used Build State, is not essential?
Sam, what's that again?
Build State, not essential.
Yeah, uh, I've heard this specific about, uh, I don't know. I heard there was a suit there, I don't know.
They're claiming that they, they have the right to provide housing to them, you know?
I think that the, uh, point of there is under quarantine now, so.
I bet there'll be a lot of things come down.
A lot. Well, like, anything that was in the process prior to this, like, continue on with it, they're just done now, like, if they knew after. Notice, if, if repair services included, I'm hearing anywhere, I had someone asking me about repair services, water heaters, dishwashers, washing machines.
Well, I don't know, I'll, we might that, uh, not going to make that a deal.
I agree with that air condition.
Under, under Dallas counties, that, they, they specifically put that in like.
Say that again?
Under Dallas counties, they specifically put that in there. Plumbers, electricians, people like that.
They have supply and repair people that they're leaning.
Yes.
Because it'd be to their discretion if they're going to go out there.
How is it not?
Yes.
A little bit in here that this, it does address that directly, but, uh, I don't like it that way.
And under general services, do they also include carpet cleaning?
I would think.
In case of super backup and that kind of thing?
Anything that has to do with sanitation could be essential, I would think.
Sanitation is an essential agent in the other.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just passing along questions underneath.
That's good.
Yeah. I have talked to a friend of mine in Iraq County, they've done this, and they were very lenient on the, uh, essential part. Because they said, you know, as people with businesses, they hate to see them be put out because of that. But they're being very lenient on the essential part.
Wichita Falls had their first two arrests last night?
I have heard.
Right? They arrested one lady who was naked, defecating on the street, and they found her for not sheltering in place.
I'm trying to look it up.
A violation of the order like this would, could be prosecuted to the class B misdemeanor with a maximum fine of a thousand dollars or one hundred and eighty days in jail. In our little hotel out here and, uh, this big other tax bar itself, but we can put them up for a while.
Quarantine facility.
It's for.
It'll take you temperatures. The fines from one dollar to one thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So let me ask you a question. So our sheriff goes out and writes Joe Blow a, a ticket. And this office is shut down, so how do they pay the ticket?
It, it is set, you know, this is.
Build State is the only time to.
So you don't put an appearance date on there?
Yes, they could.
No, you, the, the, just as long as they get a gift on them, the court will contact them when it's, when it's, when they're liable to come in. Because everything, everything has been all our system pushed.
Right.
It's up to their discretion as to what the, the fine is up to the town law.
Well, if it's a class B misdemeanor, then it would be under this court.
Yeah.
No, because it has to be up to the officers or departments discretion on how much they're going to charge them.
Yes.
Well, the, the question isn't how much it is, it's, the question is what, what's the designation of the charge? If you get, if you get arrested for it and it's one dollar, it's still could be a class B, which is going to be under John Trump.
So, so is it actually a class C and since it's under this timeframe, it goes to a class B?
If, if it's assault or, or even a theft?
Yeah, they enhance those now. They ask for.
Is, is someone who knowingly has been tested positive for this goes to a crowd of ten in the ward, is that assault?
I don't think you want that.
That's with intent.
I got another, they did that when HIV virus first came out, a situation like that. But they knowingly know that they had it, but they gathered the people in.
Well, as the prosecutor has a subject over there that's been made in place with knowledge that she's been tested positive and has not sheltered. She's just putting it out there that she is.
I was, but she's not.
Right, so she's putting fear in everybody around her.
Is that a crime in the store to tell again?
The, the state.
There's going to be some of those doing that.
The state has not issued any, any guidelines as to how this is used for prosecution as of yet. But since this is now in place, I'll, I will endeavor to speak with other folks that have and see how they've been handling it as either a class B, E, or class C, or which court they're in.
So those are folks in the city of Long Lake City, Newcastle, do, do they really need to file any paperwork or just play?
The county, I don't think they would need to.
Chris, could he, could he set a final amount himself? Does, does he set final amounts of that determined word?
City.
Well, once again, it's not that.
Probably.
It's devastating. Because a class D.
Also the city are.
Normally, it's a two thousand dollar, but this has a maximum cap of a thousand.
Well, they don't have a jailbreak life order or a hundred and eighty days. Fall under eyes, couldn't they?
We might just have twenty more days.
I'll take the load off you midnight.
That takes you away from me, it's all your risk with the state.
Congratulations.
They have to. Fourteen days.
That's what I've got right there, Mount is. Be effective.
Fourteen days right there.
Twelve, twelve A on the G-12, change the body of some of this. I will burn, basically midnight on the third murder.
A third of the population in this county lives outside of city limits of any cities. Are they subject to the shelter in place orders of Graham? They come in Graham?
Those inside their city limits.
If they're inside the city limits or so, whether they're residents or not?
The, uh, county would, uh, my deprimatism would be under this declaration to incorporate those outside the limits of the city. And it's with them, so it'll be under the ordinances of the city.
It would be in Kent.
I mean, if Wichita Falls didn't have one and you went there, or if they have one and you went there, you didn't tell about it.
Find me from.
You can't be, how can you be fined for something that you weren't aware of or whatever? I think that's a lawsuit in itself.
On your, on your first amendment, that you need to reverse the regulation?
For the day too.
It would be the last seven days, right? On the seventh day, we come to redo it.
No, I, I can amend that, uh, or I cancel it, maybe there's anything like that without further correction. So when we, when we pass that on our previous meeting, when you, uh, I guess consented to the declaration of court being able to, that put in place the, uh, the ability included in the motion to I can cancel on, on then add to or take on one of the circumstances. add to or take upon, under the circumstances, where it did. Although, we might call another meeting for continued action of that declaration. Jim, you wanna say something a little bit about Fort Belen now?
Yeah, I do.
There's tape right there.
I go with that. I just came in here and asked about closing the buildings and now that Saturday I had four different family groups show up out there, um, to the fort just on the grounds, two from Fort Worth, one from Breakmind, one from Mesquite. Um, if a shelter in place is ordered, I'm trying to just figure out a way I, that I can have a way that I can encourage people, but a shelter in place is ordered from the county, would it be advised for me to shut the gates of the fort to discourage? Shut the gates to the, the.
Yeah, I know you asked me about that and I talked about that a little bit. It may be, it may be something to do, but then also, well, I'd like to talk a little bit about a family group with a sale, you can get out.
Yeah, that's sort of confused that, I don't wanna discourage, I don't want people to.
Isn't that a violation of our shelter in place by them being here?
Well, that's where it's.
That what we just talked about?
You don't, I don't want people to, I want people to be able to Mesquite.
Violate their shelter in place by coming here, in my, in my.
Right, right. But, but also in the shelter in place, you can go outside and walk and, I gotta buy.
Yeah. And part of the other problem too is people coming out of many places to buy ser, buy goods. We have here and it's a different.
Our gas stations to.
Coming for recreation.
They're coming to Florida to love it.
I think as long as they, you know, as long as they, they can maintain their, their rural group, to get rural group, um, you know, in, in that. I don't think more than just socialism, but, and, you know, I, I don't know about a, a party because.
You might not be.
Well, for sure, what I would like to do is like at sunset, be able to shut those gates. Last night, woke up three o'clock in the morning, um, looked outside and there were two people, two cars parked out there leaving. Um, and so in the evenings, at three in the morning, there's a, there's no reason for anybody to be out there unless they're camping or staying there, so, um, at least in the evenings, I would.
Close the gates.
Sunset, you know, um, because after dark there's no reason anybody to be out there. Open up sunrise and.
I agree.
Um, just kind of monitor the people that are out there and.
Just close them when you're supposed to open.
Get the six foot cattle.
Open them when you're supposed to open and close them when you're.
But I understand we've had one person that tested positive that had no contact with any, you know, group or anything like that, so we may be getting some infection from those people coming in from the metroplex, they don't know.
That's what's curious.
Leaving here and going home.
Well, that's the whole point of shelter in place is, is to not leave your county, you know, and that's, that's what it's about to me is if you.
And we can observe it, but if they don't.
That's right. That's what I'm talking about different goal, how, how you gonna fix it if they don't adhere to it?
Yeah, bring it back.
And for, for Fort Belen, that's a different thing, so that's tourism, that's, that's people coming there, so.
It's not a necessity to have to go.
Yeah, it's not a necessity to have to go, so that's kind of what I was saying with shutting the gates, but also you don't wanna keep people hemmed up because they're gonna crazy circling sitting around, so.
Says a man without kids.
I think you have to lock the building, taking it away from a public access.
And us this weekend, they, they completely understood, there was no want to get into the buildings or anybody, just completely understands.
You shouldn't even been around.
My house gone into cemetery mode when they were getting me out. I was the one with the kids, I was afraid that a car broke down, cause the way she parked and somebody just got stopped in the house.
I don't know if public access is a question when we're suspending a lot of civil liberties.
Yeah.
No, really.
Yes, that's all I.
You got, you got a lot to say about it, Chris?
All the only thing I would say, sir, is that I know that down in Tarrant County, that if you are from out of county and you do not have a reason to, that they can, that they can and will arrest and will fine you. So my thing is, if they're gonna come in, if we're gonna put this in place, it's gotta be countywide, it's gotta be the same all across the county. I understand that, you know, we might have one here for the city or whatnot, but the counties is gonna be, in my opinion, the overriding factor there. And additionally, I, I know that you've got, I haven't seen your list of exclusions there or what is, uh, considered necessary or, or whatnot, but I would, I would personally suggest that y'all be very choosing as to who you say is, is or isn't non-essential in that list, because everybody is gonna wanna be on that list. Cause they're all gonna wanna have their business up and running and they're all going to want to be able to, you know, stay in the business, because as Commissioner Sykes said earlier, it's hard to get back up on your feet and get this stuff afterwards. But the whole point of this is to keep people separated and keep them safe because, you know, it's here and it's gonna keep coming, so.
When, in some of these business, did I put in a declaration that, like, two customers a time allowed in or?
Well, I, I don't know exactly what the, the court's ability is on that, I haven't read up on that, but all I'm just saying is I think the county needs to be very cautious as to who it allows open or not allow open, because that's a lot of problems down the line if it's too many places.
That's why, that's why you and Kenny did what they did, because it was very vague about what businesses, because their thought was that will probably take care of itself if people adheres to the, the order.
Uh, the U S Department of Homeland Security has, they've issued an advisory on essential businesses and services that they tell you right up front that this, this is, this is not an exclusive list and it's, uh, you know, what fits one county or one city doesn't necessarily fit the other, and obviously there'd be a, um, a lot longer laundry list in Dallas County than there will be in Young County, but.
Well, I, I just know that on that federal list that, um, just as an example, companies that manufacture wood, as in two by fours and, you know, raw wood products have an exemption for, for, for that, because it's considered an essential service for the needs of the country. But then the question arises, well, does that include like Ace Hardware because they have raw wood products or, you know, big, or whoever? So that would be the question. I don't know that the smaller industries are, are going to be included in that, because Ace Hardware, well, yes, that is part of their business. I don't, I don't know that that's their core business and I don't know that it would follow up with that, so I think there's a lot of gray area in those, in those federal guidelines.
Well, what I can tell you is, is that we could adopt, um, we could adopt, I could adopt the list that Wichita County has put in, but it's been, it's pretty wordy, pretty lengthy. Doesn't necessarily, I think you can lay off more group and catch all of the businesses that are necessary, but, I mean, they're not a they're not a, they're not a list that you say, okay, here it is, they're the essential business, now you've got to lay down a discretionary aspect.
Absolutely.
Are restaurants and food services still be allowed to continue carry out and delivery? I'm not sure not with this.
Uh, their circumstances won't change, I don't think, in, uh.
Give those dollars to the women.
Grocery stores.
All the grocery.
Grocery store thing, that's one, there are issues, there are congregational people inside those grocery stores, like Walmart, United.
Somebody, somebody said the grocery store and all, they're only allowed like ten people a time, and when they go out, they let another come in.
Other congregating crowds outside the door?
Well, they have a monitoring, well, I do, I know, they have a monitor out there that was, have a monitor telling them, stand six foot apart outside, part two.
Does it do any good?
Stevens County's shelter in place, I think, calls for one hundred people maximum inside their Walmart and fifty people inside, like that's a United over there now, grocery store.
I'll tell you what, I've been to the, I've been to the grocery store and United, I mean, United and Walmart, people are respecting the social justice and stuff. Cause I walk around, it's like I'm halfway married, because everybody's like, you know, way away from you, so I think they're respecting it.
Message I'd like to send them is this thing may last for thirty days, but you don't have to buy thirty days worth of stuff.
No, absolutely not.
That's the problem. You think they're getting them covered wagon going to Oregon, dropping Oregon trees?
They're not assured of the food, but they're creating sure.
Right, we're creating our own problems. Is there is people out there that need a gallon of milk, people's hoarding five gallons of milk or whatever?
Jim Ellis has been very good by giving us updates every day. And as of right now, there's, uh, confirmed cases in a hundred and twenty-four counties.
Wait, what?
There's confirmed cases in a hundred and twenty-four counties. It says that the coronavirus cases continue to increase throughout United States and takes about approximately thirty percent.
Be careful of those percentages. Low numbers, low numbers, like your wife who said that our cases have tripled as of yesterday, three times one is tripled.
Well, the only problem I have with that one deal right there is one of those guys that they're counting as ours is don't live in our county. He lives in another county, he joins us.
That's correct. I'm not sure when it all settles on, but this A D C website, it might be credited to that, to home county.
Home county, yeah.
Even though it's a major county of ours and probably the first one utilized in the city of Grandmont or this, down there, but I think, I think in the end it will be credited to that home county.
Should be.
Anything else?
Will you be publishing that list?
Jim, you get kind of a good idea of what we want to do.
It was just, it was just my, my, my line of thinking, I didn't wanna make some decision and then have it come back and, um, I, I think shut the gates sunset, open up sunrise. Just monitoring who's out there.
Just do your operating hours, Jim.
And.
Just do your operating hours.
Just monitor who's out there.
I think leave the buildings closed.
Oh, sure.
Closed the gates at sundown and something like that, so it's filthy and otherwise the monitoring that it causes. If we believe it's causing something else wrong, we'll.
Sure. I do wanna say I appreciate, I do not envy y'all in this position, I appreciate what y'all do.
I don't know, uh, I don't know, the city's order, what if they close their parks? They did, didn't they? They did close their parks.
Well, but like the RV centers, just the people coming in, the city, the suburbs that came in out there and they're all congregating together.
Yeah. There's one thing I would do, if your kids are playing outside all the time, I'd block your entrance to go both sides of your, one of your, your house, without you, if people are coming in. Just keep them from going to your house.
They, they usually come, when people come out there, they usually come going to house and, I mean, it's stranger danger type thing.
Your honor, will, will this list of, of essential need businesses, will that be published in the paper?
Please, please.
Will this list of business, essential businesses be published in the paper?
Yeah. Uh, when we get down there, it's pretty solid, I, there might be a few that need to be imploded or upon your review or somebody's review, there might be something that you think might need to be executed from it. That's probably the reason I brought it here with you once, but I've got an extra one here that I can have.
Can we see a copy before you execute it?
Excuse me?
Can we get a copy before you execute it?
I think you got one there.
I mean, you revise copy.
Oh, yeah, I can, I can get it. I can get away with it that.
Keep it surprising.
I took my walk desk, it's a lot on medical, on medical too. I can imagine that goes for like places that, right now, like wheelchairs, hospital beds, that's still essential.
I know that, right? Yeah, I think, I don't know.
Okay, did say that, okay.
EMT on that services business, I can have, um, help supply, do that also, special supply or. Does anything like further? Motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
Second.
Open the message box and start what we're through with the yarn, all part of.
Shut your fish in there, did you?
No, no.
It says cultivation of poon, it says fish.
I didn't want you out there a white boy.
It says that though.
That's one of the ones for Christmas, don't turn around.
No, I, I was just, I'm just, I just take pictures so I can remember people's faces right there, who said what, so.
Yeah.
It's not going in, it's not going in the paper like that.
They put them old germs on my stuff.
No, I just, I.
Hell, we'll all go for you, dad.
Hey, I could be on a run there.
Can you send me one of those weddings that. Can I execute it right now, is that corrupt?
The chocolate water.
Until it's revised.